Good evening. The March one, twenty twenty, Virtual Legislative Meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pruski.
Yes.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Schuet.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Madam Chair, everyone is here this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey will now introduce Pastor Chris Beatty for the invocation and then will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Good evening. I am very proud to have with us this evening my friend and my pastor, Chris Beatty from Hope Springs Church. He is here on the call and he will lead us in the invocation this evening. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Nathan. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I would just like to invite everybody to spend the next couple of minutes in accordance with your personal faith and tradition, as will I. So Father God, we first of all thank you for our country and our state and our county and the members of this council and and their tireless work for the citizens of Anarundel County. We ask that you fill this time with grace and we ask that you fill this time with wisdom and humility and finally, we pray for guidance in the matters at hand. And we pray that you enable tonight's work to be conducted with the highest regard for the residents of Anarundel County. And in accordance with my faith, I pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you now please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
County Attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, the provisions of the county charter and the rules of procedure of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held in annapolis as the county seat. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID nineteen health emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the various executive orders issued by the governor and the county executive that limit public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternative accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a calling number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the web, allowing written comments from the public to be filed and considered by the council, and allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, and for all of the same reasons, it is not necessary to suspend any of the rules of procedure for the county council that apply to public participation and reasonable seating for the public or media or the location of council meetings. These rules have been deemed satisfied and do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about the lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at four ten two 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 four four one three.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we've received three comments from members of the public. The entire council received copies and these have been posted to the website and added to the meeting file.
Okay, we have four individuals signed up to speak tonight. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. First is Jakela Call.
Hi, my name is Jakela Call and I'm a Lothian resident. I would like to have a testimony today just to advocate for the trial boards for the police department to be broadcasted live for the whole entire public to listen and tune in. We should all be able to hear what's going on in our community. With COVID going on, there are so many restrictions and in order to obey by them, I'd just like to request that they're live broadcasted for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Call. Second on our list is Lawrence Diggs.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Diggs. I am a resident of Hartford County, Maryland, and a member of the Hartford County Caucus of African American Leaders. Our President, Mr. James Thornton, has authorized me to speak on his behalf regarding the Anarundel County Police Department Trial Board Hearing and its abrupt cancellation. The Hartford County Caucus of African American Leaders is really appalled at the manner in which the Anarundel County Police Department Administration has elected to postpone the public hearing and is expressing our utter disbelief that the administration is denying the citizens of Anarundel County the benefit of hearing firsthand at a public hearing facts surrounding the assault on a private citizen by a police officer. Based on your Open Public Meetings Act, as read at the beginning of your official council meeting this evening, we have expectations that you would change your mind and conduct an open hearing and an open meeting relative to the Anarundel County Police Department Trial Board Hearing on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggs. Next, we have Antonio Palmer.
Thank you, Madam Chair Lacy, and thank you to all the council on this evening for your endless efforts of making sure that Anarundel County is the best place for all. Again, I am Bishop Antonio Palmer, Senior Pastor of the Kingdom Celebration Center here in Gambriels, Maryland, also the First Vice President of the United Black clergy of Anarundel County. A recent scheduled police trial board that was postponed was very limited to public viewership and did not give access to all the public to have the opportunity to view. Since Maryland law, it's clear that police trial boards are open to the public. We, the United Black clergy of Anarundel County, are requesting that language will be put into law to clarify that open to the public includes live streaming of the trial boards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bishop Palmer. And last, we have Cynthia Carter. Cynthia Carter. Madam Secretary, it doesn't look like we have Ms. Carter with us this evening.
I would agree. I don't think she has joined the meeting.
Okay. Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Ms. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Secretary, for the record, could you please add me as a co-sponsor for the following bills? Thirteen twenty-one, fifteen twenty-one, and twenty-five twenty-one. Once again, thirteen twenty-one, fifteen twenty-one, and twenty-five twenty-one. Thank you.
Just to clarify, twenty-five twenty-one has not yet been read in.
So I can do that after.
I'll make a note, but I just want to clarify that for everybody.
Try to combine it to be efficient and look what happens. Okay, anybody else with an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of February sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
Meeting was called to order by Chairman Sarah Lacy at six P M. Ms. Lacy gave the invocation and led the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with the roll call of all present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February sixteen, twenty twenty-one?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The minutes of February sixteen, twenty twenty-one stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number twenty-two twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations. Bill number twenty-three twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of Second Amendment of Lease Agreement of Certain County-Owned Property to Robert A. Haskell Youth and Family Services, Inc. Bill number twenty-four twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Timber Special Community Benefit District. Bill number twenty-five twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Revenue Reserve Fund. Bill number twenty-six twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Crime, Civil Offenses and Fines, Crimes, Noise Disturbances.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number seventeen twenty-one, Resolution endorsing financial assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund to L Three Technologies, Inc. Resolution number eighteen twenty-one, Resolution Supporting the Goals and Recommendations of the Joint Initiative to Eliminate the Opportunity Gap Committee. Resolution number nineteen twenty-one, Resolution Supporting the Development of a Statewide Comprehensive Plan to Divert Food Resid- Residuals from Landfills.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eight twenty-one as amended.
Bill number eight twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Permits, Residential Peers, and Riparian Rights.
This is Ms. Fiedler's bill. You have the floor, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. We have discussed this in previous meetings and during our work sessions, so this bill would add a certification checkbox to the peer permit application and would require an email or mail notification to an HOA or an above budding property owner in an effort to address any riparian rights, right issues in advance of construction. When it is applied, I know there have been some questions about how this would play out in the Office of Planning and Zoning, but an applicant would notify their HOA or adjacent property owners by mail or email. Then the applicant would apply for the permit and check the box that they have riparian rights and that they've notified the HOA and then they would include a copy of the email or a certified mail information with their application, and I ask for my colleagues' support this evening.
Thank you. And would the administration like to comment? Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the council. Pete Baron with the administration. I've got a bunch of folks here for questions. Our Environmental Policy Director, Mr. Johnston, our OPZ Director, Mr. Kai Ziegler, and from OPZ, Ms. Krenitz, our IMP Director, Mr. Africa, and Mr. Waseem from IMP, and from Law, our county attorney, and yours, Mr. Greg Swain. The, as the sponsor mentioned, this has been discussed a few times. I think she did a fantastic job explaining the bill. Appreciate the work that went in on this bill. The administration supports and appreciates the sponsor working with us to get this important bill introduced and done right, and we're fully supportive. So with that, happy to answer any questions on the impact of the bill, but we would ask that you move the bill tonight.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none at this moment, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number eight twenty-one as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony for Bill number eight twenty-one as amended.
Okay, we will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time to speak. We have one individual signed up. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. We have Robert Welsh. Mr. Welsh? Mr. Welsh, it looks like you are not muted, but we cannot hear you. It looks like we lost Mr. Welsh.
Madam Secretary, I note from the record from the last meeting that Mr. Welsh actually had registered to speak on Bill nine twenty-one. I'm not certain if maybe he intended, but if you want to give him another try when nine twenty-one is up, that is also something to do.
Okay, well, then to keep things going, we will go ahead and close the public hearing on Bill number eight twenty-one. Subject to Mr. Welsh, he just popped back in. Madam Secretary, can you give him a chance to try again?
Let's try again, yeah.
Mr. Welsh, please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Mr. Welsh is unmuted. If you want to give us a test here. I'm not certain, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, Mr. Welsh did this at the last meeting. I don't know what kind of difficulties are happening here, but I cannot hear him.
Okay, I can't either. Unfortunately, we are going to have to move on. Okay, now the public hearing on Bill number eight twenty-one as amended is closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eight twenty-one as amended.
Bill number eight twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes Supplement, Permits, Residential Peers, and Riparian Rights.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Just for the record, I think this would be for the Office of Planning and Zoning. Office of Planning and Zoning is interested or willing to issue a green, or maybe it's a blue, notice on clarifying what the certification box is. I know we went back and forth discussing this. Just want to confirm.
Yeah, well, what we had indicated is we work with IMP. That's why we called it a blue-green notice, because one department is blue, one department is green, but yeah, we we can definitely come out with something that provides clarification. We know what some of Mr. Welsh's concerns were. We can work with Mr. Africa and make sure that when this does go live, the directions are very clear and it doesn't get complicated, more complicated than it needs to be.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Krenitz, because we couldn't hear from Mr. Welsh, but you indicated that you know what his concerns are, can you relay those to us just so that we're aware?
One of his concerns is because the bill uses the word, or uses the language, that they would have to certify exactly what that means. And it's not our intention that you would have to go hire a title attorney or anything like that. You would, as you know, Ms. Fiedler explained, it's simply a box that you are certified and you have riparian rights. So we don't intend to make it any more complicated. It's just an attempt to make sure that all parties involved are communicating and that, you know, the applications are as correct as they can be when they come in.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a follow-up to that. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So Ms. Krenitz, I appreciate that. Just so that I make sure I understand this. So the certification would be by the individual who is putting in to get the peer permit or to say that they have the riparian rights. And by them making that certification, that then allows IMP, as I've understood it, that if you subsequently find out they don't have those riparian rights, you could immediately issue a stop work order. Is that right? Because what they've represented to you isn't accurate?
I believe that is correct. I'll let, if Mr. Africa wants to answer that, because that is an inspections and permits process.
Yes, Greg Africa, IMP. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing and hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number eight twenty-one as amended.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number eight twenty-one as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number nine twenty-one as amended.
Bill number nine twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Civil Emergencies Duration.
Ms. Fiedler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This bill was also discussed at our previous meeting and work session, and it sets a maximum amount of time that a council approves civil emergency can continue before any county executive must then renew that civil emergency with a new declaration and then subsequent required approval from the council to go beyond seven days. I think it is important to remember that this section of our code was never intended to go for an extended period of time. Until last year, there were no civil emergencies in this county that had gone beyond seven days, and there have only been a handful of civil emergencies in fifty-plus years. The current civil emergency we have in place has been in effect for nearly a year with no required public discussion or update on why it's necessary or if it's necessary. But this bill as amended will not change the current civil emergency. I think that's also important. I do believe we have a responsibility as the only council to govern through a pandemic to address this. It would be really, in my opinion, a disservice to future councils, county executives, and every resident in our county to not pass this bill tonight. So I ask my colleagues for their support.
Mr. Baron, would the administration like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as the sponsor noted, this has been discussed. I will state that the council has the power to put parameters when the, I think it was twenty-four twenty passed, declaring the emergency, the council could have put these types of parameters on. We have, I think, not been required to come before the council and provide information, but this administration has provided regular updates to the council through this pandemic, and the sponsor is correct. It has been an unprecedented year. I think that word is used a lot. You know, the administration is more comfortable with the bill as it is, but we still believe that this is the wrong approach to do it this way. We think that the council has this power. It would be, you would be allowed to craft any declaration of emergency however you see fit. So a future council may think that a shorter timeframe is right or a longer timeframe is right. So with that, our position has not changed from our position.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Mr. Baron, you are absolutely accurate that we have requested conversations, public conversations about the current civil emergency, and that is much appreciated. I would argue that we have, in this past year, gone from needing the civil emergency in order to kind of pause the clock on applications and legislative timelines. That is no longer really the issue. Things have constantly changed during this pandemic. And if and when, hopefully it's an if and not a when, this were to ever happen again for any council or county executive, by issuing a forty-five day cap, that would require all of those conversations that we've had individually or in work group, in the work group, COVID recovery work group, whatever that work group is called in the future. It would bring those conversations to the public table and involve the county council. And maybe if this were in place right now, we would still be in the same position. That's very possible. But we would be required to have those conversations on a forty-five day cycle so that the residents could be included in those conversations and can kind of understand the process and the timeline and how things are going. I just think that this adds a whole level of transparency and increases the conversation in the public eye. So that's all.
Madam Chair, if I may.
You may.
Pete Baron with the administration. Just one comment to that. There have been, I think, three separate bills seeking to terminate the state of emergency, so the council does have the power if it wishes to end the state of emergency right now.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments are going to be similar to what I said at the last meeting and during the work session. We currently have the power as a council to put any number of days on a civil emergency beyond seven days. We have this power already, so I want to be really clear what we're talking about. This bill is sort of unnecessary, because a year from now, two years from now, or twenty years from now, the sitting council has that authority as is. I think it's important for the public to understand that. This is actually putting an arbitrary number of forty-five days. I don't really know where those days came from, but we could make it forty-six days or forty-four days or twenty-two days by the power of the vote of this council. That is the way the code is written currently.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District Seven. The one thing that I think is interesting about this is that it really, it really hits home for me on the fact that the discussion becomes public. I will note, there were a couple of times in the last year where I had specifically reached out and asked for an update from, you know, could we get an update at a council meeting from the Health Department and was told, oh, well, we'll do it at a work session or things like that, where it didn't allow time for necessarily the public to be as involved. I think that's, that's pretty, that's a critical piece of this. And I don't think we can discount that. Certainly, we could end the state of emergency at any time, as people have said, but that's not what this bill is about. It doesn't address this emergency at all. It's sort of things learned from this emergency applied moving forward. It's important to have that discussion on a regular basis so the public has a chance to participate and understand what's going on. The transparency piece of this, I don't think can be stated enough. That's all.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I just want to applaud my colleague from District Five on this forward-thinking and common sense bill that she has put together. And I read an article over, I think, the weekend where, you know, one of the local papers indicated that this was a very good bill and it made a lot of sense, and I hope that everybody can see it that way. The one thing I would ask my colleagues is we Um, the one thing I would ask my colleagues is we we had put in the amendment that I proposed last meeting that passed um that ensures that the current state of emergency is not affected by this bill. And if any of my colleagues who are struggling with this bill or feel that the number of days is arbitrary in some way, um, please do share what the number of days that you think would be appropriate to put in would be what would be a non-arbitrary number, whether it's forty-four or forty-six. Um, I'd be curious to know what that is, just so that we can potentially amend this and get this thing passed that the council can have this going forward because it is a, I think, very important way to preserve some institutional knowledge and some hard-learned lessons through the pandemic for future councils, which in many ways is is what, you know, we are trying to do um as legislators and creating legislative history.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. I will recognize myself. Sarah Lacy, District One. Actually have uh much less concern with the forty-five day time period or um whatever other time period you wanna pick than with the uh requirement that if if this bill passes as amended, then the extension must be authorized by an emergency ordinance enacted by the county council, which means every time we want to extend a forty-five day period, it must be done by five out of seven council members agreeing. I think that's where the real sort of, you know, uh buyer's remorse lies because a year ago, we unanimously agreed that um that the county executives' emergency powers needed to be extended to deal with this COVID-nineteen pandemic. And we've learned so much over this past year. So, but each time that we've had these three bills come up to terminate it, none of them have been able to get a majority of votes. So instead, the limit that's now being offered is to require a super majority of votes to even go into an emergency. I think that's actually an usurpation of the executive power by the legislative branch. And in that way would be um ineffective that actually um having county executive carry out his emergency powers. And the people already have sufficient remedies, not only, first of all, uh by um the time limits that, you know, their elected representatives can put into the emergency ordinances that we pass, which we have done and we did agree to. Um, but, you know, if they don't like it, they won't reelect the people who were in charge um as they were handling an emergency. That's fundamentally what happens. Um, and so I think if the shoe were on the other foot, Mr. Volkey, for example, because I know this is really funny, probably you would not be supporting this bill. Comments over. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna try to be more concise in my um comments, so maybe they'll be more clear. The county council, according to our code, already has the power to determine the number of days to extend a civil emergency. We currently have this power and we don't need to, um, that's not the issue. Um, the council currently has the power to determine the number of days to extend the county executive's civil emergencies in a state of emergency. We already have the power. Thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District Seven. Um, I have a question. I think it's for Mr. Swain because I I think what I'm hearing from Councilwoman Pickard and Councilwoman Lacy are a little bit opposite each other. Um, I'm hearing from Councilwoman Pickard that we already have the power to put in this forty-five days, but Councilwoman Lacy says that the uh five votes necessary to then re-up it after forty-five days would be uh sort of a violation or a usur- usurpation of of the county executive's power. Mr. Swain, if there were a time limit, let's say a a new state of emergency came up two years from now and and there were a time limit put on it by the council of forty-five days. When that forty-five days was up, it it would require five votes of the council to re-up that council that that emergency, wouldn't it?
Greg Swain, County Attorney, um only if it was done by emergency ordinance, and based on the timing, it would probably have to be.
Okay. So it would be, so that five votes is is what it would always take essentially?
With if you're looking at that short of a timeframe.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else have a question or a comment at this time? Okay, seeing, oh, okay, Ms. Fiedler, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This will just be my closing statement. Um, we have always had the power to um put in an end date. When we were in the starting point of the pandemic in March, none of us, not a single one of us would have any way of knowing how long this pandemic and emergency and state of emergency orders would be in effect. I firmly believe that we have a responsibility for the next council that deals with a one-hundred-year pandemic, because I know I won't be alive in a hundred years, to adjust our code to reflect what we have lived through as elected officials for the past year. That is all this bill is doing. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Okay. We did, as a council, agree to run the current civil emergency concurrently with the state of the state, the governor's state of emergency. We agreed unanimously, and we still remain in a state of emergency with the state. And so that, in that time, for that bill, for that moment in time, for that emergency, that is where this council led. For the next civil emergency, it'll it'll probably be very different. Who we we have, none of us can know what it is, and we have the same powers today that we could have chose, we could have chosen to do it differently. We ran it concurrent with the state. And every thirty days, the governor renews the state of emergency, giving the same powers again. So when he chooses to end the state of emergency, so will our civil emergency. The next time there's a need to enact a civil emergency, we have the power to put any number of days we choose on the extension of the seven days. We have this power already. I'm done.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number Nine Twenty-One as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received eight submissions of testimony for Bill Number Nine Twenty-One as amended. The entire council received copies and these have, it has been posted to the website and added to the bill file.
Thank you. We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. The public hearing on Bill Number Nine Twenty-One as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Nine Twenty-One as amended.
Bill Number Nine Twenty-One, An Ordinance Concerning Civil Emergencies Duration.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number Nine Twenty-One as amended.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Robbien.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Bill Number Nine Twenty-One as amended has failed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Ten Twenty-One.
Bill Number Ten Twenty-One, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Grants, Special Revenue Fund, CAO Contingency Fund, Capital Budget.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Good evening again, uh, Madam Chair and uh members of the committee. Joining me, I have a a big panel, so um thi- this is a big bill. Um, from budget, Mr. Teru, from health, Ms. Penley, from transportation, Ms. McGill, from ACDS, Ms. Coke, from emergency management, Ms. Emmerich, and from law, Ms. Lori Blair Klasmeyer. Um, like I said, this is an important bill. This is a a budget transfer bill. Uh, there's a couple of sections. I will just give you the highlights. Um, I think, Madam Auditors, Blue Note covered a lot of this, and I could be mistaken, but I believe we also discussed it at the work session. So we're we're happy to go into detail if you have specific questions. Uh, the first section, it recognizes seventeen million and change uh from the Federal Emergency Rental Assistance Fund. This will go to um uh help interrondal uh community development deal with the housing issue, uh issues around housing and COVID. We're recognizing in Section Two, two million uh and two hundred thousand and change in uh special grants, uh three grants in the Health Department totaling one point seven million uh for two COVID response um items and one grant for the Gun Violence Intervention Team. Uh, three grants uh in the Department of Transportation totaling five hundred thousand dollars. Um, the one thing to note, uh, the, there is a match needed for one of the uh for the Department of Transportation grants, uh but due to other grant sources already bought, brought before this council, that grant match can be absor- absorbed within existing appropriations. Um, the Health Department, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna move on to Section Three. Uh, we're transferring two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars uh from the CAO Contingency Fund. Uh, a hundred and fifty thousand of that will be to OEM uh to hire a consultant to assist in maximizing the reimbursement allowed for COVID-nineteen expenditures through the through FEMA, through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Um, and seventy-five thousand dollars to transfer uh to the capital budget to pay for the Defender's Memorial Capital Project. Uh, and uh Section Four just recognizes that capital budget transfer. So with that, uh, happy to answer any questions. Ask the council to move the bill tonight.
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, let's go to the public hearing. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number Ten Twenty-One. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions of testimony on Bill Ten Twenty-One.
Okay. We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill Number Ten Twenty-One is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Ten Twenty-One.
Bill Number Ten Twenty-One, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Grant Special Revenue Fund, CAO Contingency Fund, Capital Budget.
And last chance for discussion? Or congratulatory remarks? It's a lot of great money, guys. Good job. Okay.
This, the fo- Madam Chair, sorry. The folks on the Zoomer, I put it to good work.
I'm sure they will. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number Ten Twenty-One.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Robbien.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number Ten Twenty-One is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Eleven Twenty-One. It's time for the big show.
My pleasure. Bill Number Eleven Twenty-One, An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Zoning, General Development Plan, Plan Twenty Forty.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are joined this evening by County Exec- Executive Stuart Pittman. Um, and the administration has their other usual team of folks, but we get to start with Mr. Pittman. So, uh, sir, you have the floor. Sir, you're still muted, or at least I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
You all have the button in a different place. All right. So thank you, uh Chairwoman Lacy and members of the council for allowing me to join you tonight. Um, out of respect for the independence of this branch of government and for the important role that each of you play, I have limited my appearances here to to budget presentations. I made an exception tonight because Plan Twenty Forty, the the document that I am submitting for your review, uh your improvement and your approval, is a really big deal. A lot is at stake, and I want to draw attention to these proceedings. I, like every one of you and nearly all of the five hundred and thousands, five five hundred and eighty thousand people that we represent, was frustrated despite the existence of past general development and small area plans uh that this county turned acres and acres of farmland and forests into residential and commercial development without first ensuring that we protected natural resources and without first planning and budgeting for the transportation infrastructure, the schools, the parks, and the public safety that our residents need. So instead, we endured a system in this county whereby bad development could easily be approved through modifications and variances. Modifications and variances to circumvent our laws and our plans, modifications that were too often granted because county executives told planning officers which projects to approve. And it was generally the ones whose investors had contributed generously to campaigns. Our residents lost some trust in their leaders and in the plans like the GDP. Uh, could could I ask Madam Administrator to share a slide with you, an image? Very quickly, yeah, thank you. Uh, this, this cartoon from last Sunday's Capitol suggests that we still have work to do. Thank you. Uh, the this morning's column in the Capitol by Russ Stevenson described the role played by the county council in the two thousand nine GDP when forty parcels were rezoned primarily for development in direct conflict with the plan. And many others were upzoned in separate bills later. Most residents didn't notice those land use changes when they were, worked their way through the legislative process. They just noticed that schools got overcrowded, trees came down, and traffic got a whole lot worse. Uh, then they learned in recent years that we had a two billion dollar backlog of infrastructure needs to serve new subdivisions that should probably not have been approved, leaving us no choice but to raise taxes to pay debt service on bonds that financed long overdue projects. In retelling this story, I mean no disrespect to the county executives or county councils of the past. It's just the way politics was done, but we must do better, and I know that all of you feel the same way. All of us believe in smart growth, in redevelopment, in placemaking with community benefits, in getting cars off roads with transit-oriented development, in providing adequate public facilities before we grow and in protecting our forests and our open space. But the question that Plan Twenty Forty asks is, are we willing to give up some power? Are we willing to accept a roadmap that increases community engagement and establishes performance metrics? Are we willing to pass a plan that postpones comprehensive rezoning until after communities have created their own planning documents? And that calls on us to update our county code? I am willing, and I believe that you are as well. Plan Twenty Forty has had a three-year gestation period in a set and has set us a new standard for community engagement. Maryland Department of Planning was so impressed with the effort that it expressed hope that, quote, "This format can be a model for jurisdictions throughout the state." The most important part of Plan Twenty Forty is the implementation section with some six hundred goals, policies, and strategies, each one with responsible departments, timelines, and performance metrics. Compare that to the small area plans and GDPs of the past that sat on shelves collecting dust. The part I like most is the nine regional plans. I didn't participate in the small area plans of the early two thousands, but the stories I heard from community leaders during that time were the inspiration for my campaign for this office. Some of you joined me in two thousand eighteen as we reconvened all sixteen groups for progress reports. And it was quite an education. Small area plans were flawed only in that they lacked implementation plans and were never linked to Small area plans were flawed only in that they lacked implementation plans and were never linked to zoning. The regional plans proposed in Plan Twenty Forty precede zoning and are part of a detailed implementation strategy. Power to zone remains with the County Council. But timing matters. Rezoning each area as a response to regional plan submission empowers communities. Sequencing of regional plans is up to you. We've shared some proposals, but I won't weigh in on the decision. Some residents may want to go first, and others may prefer waiting. What matters to all of us is that these efforts have the resources they need to be done well. With a much smaller, long-range planning staff than we had in the early two thousands, we must spread the work out over the full G D P cycle as we do other plans. I believe that will result in small, in stronger plans with fewer mistakes. I'm gonna stop talking and let public testimony begin, but I must comment first on the new word in all of our vocabularies. Lucas, those land use change applications that everybody seems to be talking about. The good news is that we're talking about them. It got to be a big thing because O P Z created this brilliantly user-friendly website called Plan Twenty Forty at Home, where the public and all stakeholders could click on a map and read about requested changes. The plan before you reflects staff conclusions on those applications based on a consistent set of criteria. You may choose to change some of those conclusions, but I hope you will agree with O P Z that some of the more controversial ones should await regional planning for further consideration. But just think about what that, what progress that is. Developers now have advanced reading on community and staff opinions about prospects for zoning changes at specific parcels. Residents now know what landowners are thinking about and can start conversations with them about a way forward. These conversations will never be easy, but we're having them now publicly and in the context of our overall vision for the county, long before any bulldozers arrive. That's how planning should work, and that's why Plan Twenty Forty is so important. I I know it's a little corny to quote your dad in a setting like this, but I can't resist. He would say, "It's the obligation of each generation to leave the land that we use in better condition than we found it." To me, that about sums up why Plan Twenty Forty is a really big deal. Uh I'm happy to take any questions if you'd like, but uh you have important public testimony to hear, so um if you prefer, I can, I can uh sign off and listen, but I'm happy to hear from anybody who has questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman, and as is our usual procedure, we will um ask for any questions from the council, and I ask everyone to do keep in mind, we we will have public testimony coming up here, so let's uh have one at a time, please. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District Seven, County Executive Pittman. I have, there are two sort of interrelated questions. Um I would say at this point, the one of the biggest concerns I've heard from constituents with respect to the general development plan um actually deals with the regional plans, and um and the two are obviously intertwined. Um I've heard from a number of members who thought that they uh were going to have clear voices as part of the G D P, and then as it went through, feel like their voices were not heard, and that the plan was really a planning and zoning plan that um they were just supposed to sign off on. So my question in that sense to you is, how do you intend to choose the regional plan groups for each region? And how will you ensure that the regional plan members are the ones leading the conversation and not planning and zoning?
Well, I I think this was um, has been an issue in all the general development plans and all county plans that that you do have to have professional planners engaged in that process. That's what they're trained to do, and they have to, they have to listen, they have to listen to all the stakeholders, and they have to come out with with what they think is the, you know, the 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 best product based on their training and based on what they hear. Uh and and as you know, these are really controversial issues. Um the composition of the regional planning groups is um, it's it's something that I know that some of you have talked about, and um planning zoning has set forth um a structure for those with different areas of representation that they recommend. Um I I understand that you may have, some of the council may have bills to to adjust that, and we're certainly open to that. Um I think what's important with those is that they have, that they are diverse. Um that they have residents, both business owners and and community residents, primarily residents um who have a stake in the future of those regions. And and um it's uh, there's always gonna be that tension between the staff that's writing the document and the the group that is advising the writing of that document. And um and I I think we have a a great team at Office of Planning and Zoning who really does value community engagement, so um I got my fingers crossed that that um that it'll be something where where people, nobody will get everything they want, but where people will feel heard and feel like like they had a real voice.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Uh, Mr. County Executive, thank you for being here with us. Appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you about this. So one of the things that I had asked Planning and Zoning, and I just want to understand um sort of what's been put on the table, but the growth rate uh over the last ten years or so in our county has been about point seven percent. That's what I understand from Planning and Zoning. Um and one of the things that I think all of us heard in our elections in two thousand eighteen was, "Stop the development, no more building, no more houses, we need to slow down." However, Plan Twenty Forty has, as I understand it, no changes to the growth rate and is in fact expecting that trend to continue at a point seven percent growth rate. Uh what that means is that the county would be looking at potentially another twenty-nine thousand households in the county. Um so the reason I'm asking that is, where is it that you expect that those twenty-nine thousand additional units are going to go? Or those households, where are they gonna be in the county, uh considering that the plan is still projecting that? And where in the plan have we acknowledged, uh, you know, that the growth rate is gonna continue and not change? Because I know that that's something that a lot of us heard was, "Slow down the development," you know, and "stop it." But I'm not seeing that actually happen anywhere from a high level in the plan.
Well, I think anybody who's trained in planning would tell you that planners don't set growth rates, that the government doesn't make decisions for the private sector about things that that uh the market, and so uh the market has a lot to do with it. Uh if we were to say that we are going to have a certain growth rate, or we are gonna have this many houses built here and this many built here, or we're gonna limit the number, even put a cap, some have proposed that we actually have a cap on the number of building permits, and we just, rather than look at environmental considerations or any kind of public benefit, that we just say Anarom County is closed at a certain level. Um that wouldn't hold up in the court, so everything that we did, every time that we turned down an application for a subdivision, it would be challenged based on the statement that Anarom County says that uh we're not gonna allow new people to move here, only the people who live here now. So that's not what planners do, is set growth rates. Um what they've done is they've looked at what the trends have been, and they've looked at what they expect, but they don't know what the market's gonna be in the future, so no planner can tell you that, no, and no plan can or should um set any kind of a cap. What we've done is we've established what our community values are and our principles when we, when we do our legislation and when we look at at subdivision applications. And, you know, you you, you may have nos- noticed that in this administration, there have been subdivision applications rejected, there have been many more denials than in the past. Some people might see that as an effort to slow growth. I see it as an effort to direct growth um and and to protect uh protect sensitive areas and to ensure that we don't put things where we don't have infrastructure to serve them.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Um, Mr. Volkey, a follow-up?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I just want to be clear, County Executive, because I I understand the point that you're making, but is the administration comfortable with a growth rate of approximately fourteen hundred and fifty new units per year? That's what that point seven growth rate comes out to according to Planning and Zoning.
Completely depends on where those units are. You know, if we can do transit-oriented development successfully and and comply with uh the the goals set forth in the um, or at least the guidelines set forth in the Greater Washington's uh Partnership's new study on transit-oriented development, um we might be able to to accommodate that if those, if those units are um are in the right places and we have the infrastructure for them. But I would not, I would not support s- uh building that number of of uh houses um or or units of any kind um in areas that don't comply with our plan, um that would be sprawled development, cutting down trees, um destroying open space, and and um or putting them in places where we don't have infrastructure.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District Seven. Um County Executive Pittman, from a high level, what other states or jurisdictions, if any, uh did you look at when crafting this plan? And I ask only because um the land use designations are very similar to land use designations as they have been in past G D Ps, and I I was hoping perhaps that we were going to be looking to other states for some creative ideas um potentially on some sort of um transition zones or things like that uh as as we move between residential and commercial areas and things like that. And I I didn't see a lot of that in this plan, and so I'm just trying to figure out if we brought in anybody from another state or looked to guidance from other states where people have done some of the things we might like to do successfully.
Well, there were, there were some changes in those definitions of what those land use categories were, and that was one of the things that the Maryland Department of Planning complimented our staff for, was they liked those designations that were created. Um the, our planning officer has worked in in many counties in Maryland, as you, as you know. Um he's brought in staff uh as well in long-range planning um from from other areas um from West Coast and elsewhere. And and um we brought in Governor Glenn Denny's Smart Growth America Organization early on in the process um for a a day-long um forum that we had two or three hundred residents attend uh early on and and to set out those kinds of principles. So planners talk to each other. Um Steve Kaisigler uh tr- has traveled the country, speaking at and attending conferences, and uh they they could probably answer the question better than I could about what what jurisdictions they looked at, what models they looked at, you know, who's who's um research they're looking at. Uh I didn't, I didn't write the plan. Um I hired the staff that wrote the plan, and um so they could give you a much better answer.
Thank you. Ms. Hare, you slipped your slide up to.
I I just wondered if maybe Mr. Kaisigler had a follow-up to County Executive.
Sure. Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer, um County Executive's right. Um just on a personal level, I have worked all over Maryland, as most of you know. I've worked in Virginia and North Carolina. Christina Pampa, one of my deputies, has considerable experience in in California. Many of the newer people that we've hired have extensive experience in other states. We would like to think we're on the cutting edge of understanding what other places do, and we try and steal as many best practices as we can. One of the things you'll find in in planning in this country is that Maryland is actually on the cutting edge in many ways, so a lot of other places look to see how we do things. So always willing um and open to looking at a better way of doing something, and I think we did employ that in the uh the development of this plan.
Mr. Rollkey, we'll have a final question, um and then we'll move on to the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm not sure if this is a question for the administration or for Planning and Zoning, but um I understand that the regional planning process is gonna take somewhere around five to six years to complete. Uh the next G D P is due in eight years, which is in twenty twenty-nine. Uh the planning, and it's gonna start in about five years for the next G D P. I guess what I just want to try to understand is, how is all this gonna line up in terms of of how you all see this going? I mean, are you gonna spend the next five years, maybe a little longer, six years, doing the regional plan? And then you're automatically gonna jump into the next G D P, and you're gonna have the sort of intervening three years to get that done and then present it in twenty-nine? I'm just trying to understand uh how the plan is gonna look.
I think I'd let uh Mr. Kaisigler answer that, but I would say that with the eight year, the eight-year cycle is something new, that the state of Maryland has a ten-year cycle, requires G D Ps every ten years. Um it it was a few years back that they switched to an eight-year cycle to align with the the political um calendar, and and um I I would encourage the council to to consider whether or not that is the right cycle. Um I'm not sure that with the regional plans happening um um over time and the rezoning not happening all at once, that that the po- political cycle really matters a whole lot in this. Um but I'll let him answer about much more knows, you know, about how that sequencing will work. Sure. Again, Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Again, the County Executive is right. And Councilman Volkey, I think you're right as well. We're um uh, we're gonna have several um parallel priority planning processes. One is gonna be on the region plans, where, as you know, we have the staff to tackle two, uh through, excuse me, three of those at a time. They're gonna take anywhere from eighteen, twenty-four to thirty months, depending on the nature of the work involved. Um as we're nearing completion of the first three, we will start the second three. And as we're nearing completion of the second three, we will start the third. While that's going on, we'll be updating or doing other planning products, like updating the Master Water Sewer Plan, Odenton Town Center, uh Parole Town Center, uh the Green Waste Plan. So there's a lot of plans coming your way. And as those finish out, it will be time to begin updating Plan Twenty Forty for the next ten years. So we're trying to create, basically, we use the term "plan to plan," a system, a programmatic way of doing planning processes and products that takes us over the next several decades before there's a need to change how we do that. So that's kind of the general idea about this. It's a lot of work, and it's gonna mean a lot of these planning processes and products come to the County Council um repeatedly over the next six to ten years.
Oh, with that lovely news, thank you, Mr. Kaisigler. And thank you, Mr. County Executive, for uh coming and introducing the plan to us. We will now, at this time, move on to open the public hearing on bill number eleven twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received eight submissions of testimony for bill number eleven twenty-one. The entire council received copies, and these have been posted to the website and added to the bill file.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time to speak tonight. We have seven individuals signed up to speak. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. First is Deborah Weller.
Hello. Uh, the following testimony from the old, from the Old Millerville Neighborhood Association, neighbors of Millerville Park, Indian Landing Community Association. We oppose the bill eleven twenty-one for the following reason, and ask the council to address the following unresolved ish- issues. Several planning activities critical to the success of the plan will occur after the plan is adopted. These key issues include drafting the region plans and the critical area corridor plan, especially Route Three, as well as economic analysis, impact fees, zoning updates, and incentives that promote reuse redevelopment. Plan Twenty Forty needs to include mechanisms that restrain new development until that planning is done. Development impact fees must be raised to provide funds, new supporting infrastructure. Otherwise, the cost will fall on the county and its citizens. New rules and fees must be in place before new development is allowed under Plan Twenty Forty, and these rules should be enforced on undeveloped parcels that will rezone before Plan Twenty Four- before Plan Twenty Forty is enacted. Plan For Twenty Forty needs to recommend changes to the adequate facility requirement to prevent proliferation of development on Tier Two that relies on septic and well. Development on well and septic systems require larger lots, reducing development capacity. Our area has no community parks. Community-owned Millerville Park site would be perfect for a day use that offers a variety of activity instead of the more expensive tennis center that would exacerbate tra- traffic problems and stormwater and create light pollution. Maryland, the plan must include a clearer and more transparent vision for solving traffic congestion safety issues in Maryland Three. Plan Twenty Forty recommends converting Maryland Three to a limited access hot freeway without explaining how this would physically fit within the corridor while still accommodating local growth. The solution will draw more traffic, especially trucks, to Maryland Three. These changes will ensure quality of life, help balance the budget into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weller. Next, we have Russell Stevenson.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Russell Stevenson.
I am a resident of Severna Park and member of the Board of Directors of both the Maggie River Association and the Growth Action Network. I want to express tonight my concern about your consideration of Bill Eleven Twenty-One. County Executive Pittman mentioned earlier an op-ed piece I published in The Capital this morning, which expressed a concern growing out of having observed the county council's passage of the Comprehensive Rezoning Bill in two thousand nine. At that time, the Office of Planning and Zoning prepared a draft of that bill. And after a lengthy process in which the citizens of the county were given extensive opportunities to participate. Had that bill passed as it was introduced, most citizens would have been pleased with the outcome. That was not to be, however. Unfortunately, during the consideration of the bill, at the request of certain constituents, members of the council introduced forty-six amendments to change the zoning of the constituents' property. OPZ opposed almost all of these amendments as inconsistent with the GDP. Nevertheless, the council approved forty of them, largely on the grounds of so-called council manic courtesy. That is, members of the council did not consider the amendments introduced by a colleague on their merits, but simply deferred to the request of a colleague that they vote in favor. It is not too much to characterize this process as a travesty of sound lawmaking. The new GDP will not, of course, by itself affect any rezoning. But as you know, it does contain a land use map that incorporates various changes in land use recommended by OPZ. And any change in land use in the final GDP will inevitably be followed by a change in zoning. The planners at OPZ have spent months preparing a fine draft of the GDP.
Mr. Stevenson, your your time has expired, sir.
May I just ask finally that you not consider or introduce any amendments without carefully considering the merits of that change? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Anna Henry.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Anna Henry with the law firm Council Baradell Cosmore and Nolan. Our firm represents three property owners in Anarundel County who will be affected by the land use classifications in the planned land use map. However, we understand that the bill will be amended and we do have meetings scheduled with Ms. Lacy and Ms. Fiedler to discuss these matters. So I will defer at this time on my oral testimony until the next hearing, but I do appreciate the opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Next is Philip Dale's.
Good evening, Chair Lacy and members of the council. I'm Phil Dale's with the law firm Bliff Walsh and Simmons in Annapolis. On behalf of my clients who do business in the county, I'm looking forward to the ongoing legislative discussion to amend and eventually adopt Plan Twenty Forty. We all know the plan is an important part of our county land use system. But it's especially important because of the many other legal requirements for consistency with the plan. For example, the administrative approvals for special exceptions and planned unit developments include reference to the plan. And our future legislative decisions will also be affected, not only for comprehensive rezoning, but also for our land use laws generally. With a document this important, we need to be sure we avoid overly prescriptive conclusions that would later borrow us from flexible solutions that we'll need. The legislative process starting tonight will help us to be sure the plan instead sets us up to guide the level of growth that we know will be needed over the next twenty years. As the plan itself recognizes, both the county has no ability to direct directly control population growth or the movement of population. So if we know that we need to plan for fifty-three thousand new residents, that same reason the question in a plan is not whether to develop or not develop, the question is how should we develop and where? With that in mind, the legal impact of the plan is even more important. Any specific restrictions that would have the immediate effect stopping development in one area must be balanced by specific provisions, promote growth elsewhere, and crucially, in the same timeframe. That's a tricky balance. But this legislative process is our opportunity to level things out and be sure the plan sets out general goals and policies in the right measure with any specific, specific findings. We need to set out a clear vision of what steps to take next to be sure we don't bind ourselves or future councils from walking the right line. I appreciate the opportunity to share those thoughts tonight and again, looking forward to the ongoing legislative discussion over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dale's. Next, we have Timothy Madden.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. You have two minutes.
My name is Tim Madden and I'm a registered landscape architect, principal of the firm Morrison Ritchie Associations. I've lived and practiced land use design in Anarundel County for forty-two years. I've enjoyed seeing my community develop new opportunities for businesses, culture, shopping, education, and recreation. I think Plan Twenty Forty process represents a strong framework for Anarundel County. However, I see some glaring problems that will hinder that. First, many of the recommended land use designations identified in the plan need amendment. You should consider many of them. We need to be smart about land use, providing for affordable workforce housing, as well as the institutional, commercial land use needs that will arise as the county matures and grows. As a designer, I do not see sufficient flexibility in the proposed plan. Specifically, in the land use goals, elimination of modifications and PUDs is a big step in the wrong direction. Good design by allied professionals requires more flexibility to create mixed uses, transportation-oriented projects, walkable communities, and places of unique character. And it would be short-sighted to eliminate PUDs from the code as well. One only needs to study Columbia Newtown to realize how strongly PUDs support equality and pleasant living. PUDs are a wonderful tool for redeveloping mined land, creating a transportation-oriented mixture of residential and commercial land uses. I always ask, where are my kids going to live and raise their families? Where are the people that protect and serve the community going to live? Please include flexibility so that we can promote good design in Anarundel County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Next, we have Kevin Plessner.
Thank you for allowing me to testify about this bill. My name is Kevin Plessner and I'm the Vice President of the Lythicum Shipley Improvement Association, or LSIA. LSIA represents about eleven thousand people living in Lythicum and has been an active nonprofit community association since nineteen seventy-two. LSIA opposes three of the proposed changes contained in Plan Twenty Forty, which is Bill Eleven Dash Twenty-One. The first zoning change we opposed is labeled SR dash oh-nine. This proposed change would modify the zoning designation from low-medium density residential housing to mixed use for an area directly next to Lythicum Elementary School. The justification provided in Plan Twenty Forty is that the area is close to a light rail station so that the county wants to provide, quote, "an opportunity for creating a dense, walkable, mixed-use environment through transit-oriented development." However, it's not clear that anyone has evaluated this area for transit-oriented development. If you look at the zoning map, which I have provided in our oral written testimony, or visit the area, it's clear that this is not an appropriate location for transit-oriented development. It consists entirely of residential housing, but also has our elementary school and a handful of small local businesses. The county has not provided any details about whether it has any actual plan for the area. There's no justification provided for the change, other than the fact that it's, there's a light rail station stop nearby and has made the same recommendation for other light rail stations. However, all light rail stations are not the same. For example, there does not appear to be any consideration given to the fact that the Lythicum Light Rail Stop is a kiss-and-ride located literally behind the Royal Farms. It is not visible from the street. And transit-oriented development around the light rail station will not get any cars off the road. Any proposed development should take the character and nature of the area into account instead of painting with a broad brush. And I believe that the county has a duty to engage in due diligence, provide details, and to come up with an actual plan before making irreversible changes to the neighborhoods in which we live. We would expect that if the county wants to rezone a large residential area to mixed use, there would be at least some details provided.
Your time has expired, sir.
Mind if I finish my sentence?
Please.
Thank you. There does not appear to be any impact analysis done on the thousands of people who live in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plessner. And next, we have Tom Ballantyne.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Tom Ballantyne. I'm Vice President for Policy at NAYOUT Maryland. We're a commercial real estate trade association, representing about seven hundred companies involved in commercial, industrial, mixed-use real estate, including some of the largest property owners in Anarundel County. My address is Peel Box One Six Two Eight Oh Baltimore, for the record. Just by way of background, I have about thirty years' experience working on land use issues in Maryland. A member of the State Sustainable Growth Commission Mitigation Working Group with the Maryland Commission on Climate Change and serve on the Governor's Water Quality Trading Advisory Committee. These issues all interrelate with your plan and the success of of future plans in other counties. Want to talk about capacity for a moment, that we appreciate the attention that's paid to analysis of future development and redevelopment capacity in the plan. This information is key to adopting the right mix of policies that can achieve the plan's goals for preservation, job, and household growth. And we see that the plan estimates forty-seven thousand housing units, but are concerned that there's not much clarity on the commercial side and that the yields may be much lower. It's not clear that the environmental screen and the capacity analysis used to determine ultimate yields includes the forest conservation changes that you made in two thousand nineteen. There are significant portions of the targeted growth areas and areas near transit stops that are heavily wooded and they fall under the Greenways map layer. The requirements of your forest conservation ordinance would suggest that development potential in these locations will be limited. About half the future residential capacity is in three commercial zones. This might provide mixed-use opportunities and some market flexibility, but these are also expected to absorb about sixty-eight thousand jobs in the future. And we question whether those areas can become both home and office locations.
Mr. Ballantyne, your time has expired.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number Eleven Twenty-One is now closed. We have about eight minutes until we need to take our break for the captioners. So we could have some discussion. Or if we prefer, we could solicit a motion to hold the vote on the bill. We have a few options. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I have one question for Mr. Kaisigler, based on some of the testimony we heard. But I, if if other people have questions as well, I'm happy to to wait.
I think we should use this time wisely, so go ahead.
Okay. One of the gentlemen who spoke talked about this concept of flexibility, and I think it's an important one, sort of overarching in the general development plan. I'm trying to understand, from your perspective at the Office of Planning and Zoning, is it the intention of the plan to have some flexibility in it for creativity? Or, you know, as the, as the regional plans come about? Or are you really intending the plan to be a rigid one? Because I think he raised some interesting points about sort of outright prohibitions on things, et cetera.
So Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer, I'll give a quick response, but then what I'd like to do with a lot of the questions. We have a number of staff here who were, I'm going to say, the prime architects in developing much of the plan. And I'd like to actually ask Christina Pampa to kind of quarterback where the question should perhaps go. But we don't see this plan as a rigid plan at all. We believe it has a tremendous amount of flexibility that will be further realized and refined through the establishment of the region plans and any zoning changes that come from that. But with that short answer, Christina, do you want to ask for any help from any of the other staff or thoughts you may have?
Good evening, Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I actually echo what Mr. Kaisigler just said. You know, the plan has six hundred goals, policies, and strategies in it, and there are a wide variety of recommendations. And I think there is flexibility built into this plan. Plans by their very nature are not generally rigid. Regulation is rigid. Now, how we choose later through the region plans and through code revisions to implement the plan, that's where the rigidity, I think, comes from. But the plan itself, I think, does allow a lot of flexibility.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I recognize myself. Sarah Lacy, District One. Actually, so follow-up question to that. And Ms. Pampa, can you speak to why the plan eliminates planned unit developments as a, as a tool?
I can. Give me a second, please. So the recommendation, this is Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So the recommendation related to planned unit development is on page eighty-eight of Volume One. It's in the Built Environment section of the plan, and it's under a laundry list of recommended code revisions. It's actually, this one is a little bit more surgical in its approach in what it's recommending. It's not saying broadly to eliminate all planned unit developments, but it's saying remove planned unit development as a permitted use in the RA, RLD, R-one, and R-two zoning districts. As you know, those are lower-density zoning districts. And the idea here is that they may not be appropriate for planned unit development. This is not where we want density to go. We want density to go in our higher-density districts. So we're not saying that planned unit development should be removed from all districts, but some districts.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Allison Pickard, D-two. I wanted to take a minute, since we're going to be breaking, one, to thank the District Two representative from the CAC, Mr. William Shorter, for his tireless efforts to speak for our communities in District Two. So I wanted to do that. I'm curious, as we move, as we get past and approve this GDP with the council's wise improvements and move into region planning, will, will the stakeholder groups that that are brought together to do that, will they begin with any sort of tutorials about good design and modern building? Or is it just going to be, are they going to be allowed to explore? I mean, I know I've spent a lot of time with land use over the two years and I've learned a tremendous amount. I think those region planning groups would benefit from understanding and learning what these definitions are and the potentials of mixed use versus commercial versus high-density residential. I mean, it's, there's a lot beyond just using those words. Does the administration plan to support those region groups with that sort of education?
So I'll go again. Absolutely. The, as you bring on board a citizen advisory committee of any type to do planning work, there is a tremendous amount of background research that occurs. There's also a tremendous amount of education and back and forth sharing of ideas before the group actually seriously begins its work. So that's a prerequisite for a successful outcome.
Madam Chair, may I follow up?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Allison Pickard, D-two. I know from the work with the Glenn Burney Revitalization Implementation Task Force, it's a lot to say. We're involved currently in a targeted market study of a very specific area, and there's an outside consultant. And the first two-hour meeting that we were involved in with all the stakeholders was so important to shaping, not only their, their visioning themselves of what could be, but they got to see a lot of before and after examples from outside of Anarundel County and and the tools that were needed to make, create that after effect. And I think it is really important to grow our civic and design and development IQ amongst our regional planning groups so that they can really vision for the next fifty years in Anarundel County. Thank you.
Mr. Pruski, you've got the floor last before our required ten-minute break.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the benefit of the public, the county council is having a work session on Plan Twenty Forty GDP from six the county council is having a work session on Plan 2040 GDP from 6:00 to 9:00. It starts at 6:00 P.M. I'm sure that's on our website. Actually, I just pulled it up. And I'm sure it'll also be in the paper. So I also want folks to understand that this is not something that just happens in a council meeting. There's plenty of other meetings. I know I've met with a lot of constituents. And, Madam Chair, I don't know if it's appropriate now, but I would like to make a motion to hold this bill until March 15th. I know others may have questions, but again, we're going to have a work session. I know there's other amendments that will come, but that is my motion for coming up on the floor.
Is there a second?
Allison Pickard, second.
And the motion is, to be receded, I suppose, a motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 1121 until March 15th, our March 15th meeting, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, it's been seconded. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, with the motion to hold the vote on Bill 1121 until March 15th, 2021, has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, 7:31, right? Okay. That means, will someone please move to recess for approximately 10 minutes so that our captioner can have her break?
Councilman Pruski motioned to recess for 10 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the county council will recess until 7:45 sharp, please. Thanks. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Still here.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Radvian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Ms. Schewitt?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Sorry, but that, present.
There you are. Madam Chair, everyone is here.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1221.
Excuse me there, I'm not sure why the unmute's not working. Bill Number 1221. An Ordinance Concerning Approval of a Ground Lease Between Anarundel County and Glenn Burney Landfill Solar LLC.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening again, members of the council. I have a bunch of folks. I know my screen is shuffling, but I think we've got Mr. Johnston, our Environmental Policy Director, Ms. Romans, our Director of Central Services, Mr. Heim, our Procurement Officer from DPW. We have our Director, Mr. Phipps, and Mr... I'm sorry. And Mr. Holtz from DPW. Sorry, I butchered your name, sir. And I think we might have Mr. Trumbauer waiting in the wings from our Office of Budget. And from Law, we have Ms. Blair Klaasmeier and Mr. Federman. To... We discussed Bill 1221 at the work session, and I do want to take a moment to thank everybody in the county who worked hard to bring this project to fruition and bring it to the point where it is before you now. It really is the result of a lot of hard work by many, many folks in county government. But especially want to extend a special thank you to the teams at Central Services and the Department of Public Works. This bill will allow almost 20 acres of a retired portion of the Glenn Burney landfill to generate revenue for the county and clean energy for our residents. It's a 25-year lease agreement. The company is Glenn Burney Landfill Solar LLC, with it's a subsidiary of Amoresco. They plan to build a four-megawatt solar project on the unused site. As a reminder, this is an unused, retired part of our landfill. This land would be sitting there, doing nothing, and really, this is the exact type of project that we should be looking to do. It will bring in about 125,000 each year for the county, about over $3 million in revenues over the entire lease term. This is the, like I said, this is the type of solar development we want to be looking to do more of in Anarundel County. It's an unused property. It will now generate money and clean energy. So with that, it's a big deal, and it's a complicated deal. So the folks here at the virtual table are happy to answer any questions this council may have. But we are very excited to bring this bill before you today and hope to see it passed.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I said this at the work session. I'm really excited to see this. This was something that the City of Annapolis had This was something that the City of Annapolis had done under Mayor Panalee's, that's, that's been successful. I think it's a great use of brownfields. It's actually one area in the GDP where I'd love to see more emphasis on, on this type of use on, on brownfields. I did have one question from the ground lease, and I'm not sure if this is a question for maybe Central Services, maybe DPW, but in section three point oh six, it talks about temporary removal of the solar facility. And it says that, that should improvements be required? And if we have to go in and make any repairs during the term of the agreement, including replacement of all or a portion of the landfill cap, whether for compliance with requirements of the, of a governmental authority or to remedy damage. Essentially, we're responsible for all the costs of removal, storage, and reinstallation of the solar facility, along with any additional fees or costs charged for reconnecting the solar facility to the utility system. So if we have to go in and fix the landfill cap, that sounds like we could be on the hook for a whole lot of money. My question is then, what, what is the likelihood we would have to go in and fix the landfill cap?
That's a great question. Pete Barron with the administration. I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnston to start us off, and, and he'll pass the ball to the others on the screen if needed.
Yeah, really great question, Councilwoman Hare, for the record. Matt Johnston, environmental policy director. We actually looked at that exact thing, and we did our, our own little internal risk analysis. What's the risk? And we talked to Amoresco, and we asked, like, how often would this happen? And we asked our own staff, how often would you think that you'd have to do maintenance with or without solar on that landfill? And it came out to, um, maybe, maybe twice over the, the lifetime of the lease, but probably not. And, and I'll just say one more thing to that, and that is that as these landfills get older, and DPW can add on to this, it's my understanding that the caps, or I'm sorry, that the land ceases settling. It has settled, right? And this is an old landfill that is mostly settled, and a lot of maintenance isn't required on it. But with that, I'll shut up, and I will hand it over to the experts about landfills in DPW, and if Central Services wants to add on. So I'll start first with Chris Phipps.
Thank you, Matt. This is Chris Phipps, the Director of Public Works. That's a good question, and we feel that this, as, as Matt has indicated, the maturity of this landfill and the decomposition of, of all the material within it has pretty much settled to the point where it, it shouldn't anymore. We haven't seen any significant settling at all, or, and I can, I'll have to defer to Rhodey for the exact timeframe when this landfill was closed for filling operations, but it's, it's been quite a time. So Rhodey, if you could expand on that.
Absolutely. Good evening. Rhodey Wholehouse, DPW, for the record. This, this was actually a landfill that was run privately, probably in the nineteen fifties and sixties, and Anorondle County bought it in nineteen seventy and operated it until the early nineteen eighties, probably nineteen eighty-one or nineteen eighty-two, so it's very old. It was closed as a landfill around nineteen eighty-two, and then it was capped under a consent agreement with MDE back in the late nineties, so it's been very stable since that time and not required any maintenance.
Okay, may I ask one follow-up, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, if maintenance were required, say, maybe two times during the life of the lease, do we have some idea on what that would cost us in terms of the temporary removal? Understanding, of course, we're, we're getting lease payments. I'm just looking for a ballpark, kind of.
Yeah, so I can take a crack at that because I took a look at that, and again, DPW can, can back me up here. So we assume kind of a worst-case scenario would be that we would have to remove those panels for a ten-month period, and that we would have to pay for the removal of those panels and the lost electricity over that ten-month period. So for us, an absolute worst-case scenario in year one, where the panels are making the most amount of revenue because they're brand-new panels, is about a four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar charge if we had to remove them in a worst-case scenario in year one for a ten-month period for maintenance. By the time you get down to year twenty-five, that cost, just because of the degradation of the panels, would go down to about a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars to pay for the removal of the panels and the lost revenue over, again, worst-case scenario, ten-year period. And again, we think that that is highly unlikely, that that kind of maintenance would have to happen, but it was good to see that even in year one, the worst-case scenario is less than a half-million dollars, or less than one-sixth of the whole agreement.
Thank you. I'll recognize myself for a second. Sarah Lacy, District One. My question is, with the electricity that is generated from this particular project, do we, do we know whether it is going into the grid in such a way that an electric consumer in Anorondle County could select to have their power come from this landfill?
So for the record, Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director. I know that answer, but I've spoken enough, and I want to give others who are dealing with this a chance to. So I'm going to hand that over to Christine Romans from DPW, who can talk a li, or I'm sorry, from Purchasing, who can talk a little bit about that.
I did used to work for DPW, so it's an easy mistake to make. Hi, Christine Romans, Central Services Officer. I'm actually going to ask Andrew Heim, the purchasing agent, who worked very closely on this deal, putting this together for the county, to please respond to that.
Absolutely. This is Andrew Heim, purchasing agent for Anorondle County. I would add in that this is anticipated that there will be a power purchase agreement that would be the result of the leased energy. And as a result, although we have the opportunity and are currently in negotiations over that lease, over the power purchase agreement, if, if we choose to have taken that, that it, the lessees has the opportunity then, that if, if we choose not to participate, or are unable to negotiate, that they would be able to work with another entity to be able to execute a power purchase agreement, to be able to sell that energy.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick comment and then a question. I actually want to thank Mr. Wholehouse. I went to the Millersville landfill this past Saturday, even though it's not the Glenberney site, but hopefully we have some future sites, maybe at, at that, for future contracts. And I would highly recommend the council, if you do get an opportunity, to come look at that asset, which is in District Four. I, I do want to ask a question, though, related to this site. As far as the review, were there other sites that were looked at along with this? I, I know, again, this is one project, one area, but when you're looking towards the future, has there been any other considerations for Anorondle property? Again, I know this is one property, but I'd just like to ask as a part of the record, how far, far this goes, because it's a legitimate question, right? We're talking about GDP and policy and plans. So I'm just curious, when this was either solicited, or whoever came to the table, what are the, the future plans to go on from this? Could there be a, a ride-around agreement, a write-on agreement with this, or other possibilities? I don't know if it's a purchasing question, so on, but I'll, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
So Matt, send for the record from the, the county executive's office. I'll talk big-picture policy. Hold on tight. This is number one. We hope to bring more. But in the details, I'll tell you that where we got this, this from was an older plan that DPW knows quite well, where the entire county was looked at, all county-owned sites. But this goes back to, I believe, twenty-eleven or twenty-thirteen. So it's an older plan, and this was one of the, the most compelling sites in that plan. But Chris Phipps, do you want to talk a little bit about all the rest of the sites that are in that plan, without going into too much detail in the plan itself?
Yeah, we've, we've done this in conjunction with purchasing, Central Services soliciting any interest for any of our sites, or, you know, the suitable sites, which we tried the South County, or what, what, what we call South Sands Road Park. It was an old rubble landfill, but we didn't get any takers. You know, we're kind of, it's, it's up to the proposers. If they think it's a viable site that could generate a, a positive business, they could generate money. And so far, the Glenberney has been the most successful. We've, we've had other opportunities. I think the North Aquatic Center, we looked at putting in a, a grid up there, again, through proposers. And the Annapolis, actually, we looked at the Annapolis wastewater treatment plant, putting a grid over the shellfish closure pond, which is about, what? Fif, twelve million gallons of storage, you know, it's, it's acres of land, but that, we just couldn't get it to work out. That's really complicated, you know, trying to put something over a storage area, a wet storage area. So anyway, we've had other opportunities, and I think we'll just keep chipping away at this and figure out what works best. What does the market seem to desire in terms of the type of properties that we have to offer? And we'll, I think we're going to learn a lot from this experience while repurposing and earning some revenue off of it, too, so.
Does anyone else have a question at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number twelve twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Oh, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony for Bill number twelve twenty-one.
Okay. We will now hear from member, members of the public who signed up ahead of time to speak tonight. We have one individual signed up to speak. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When I call on you, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. We have Michael Lofton.
All right, I'm glad I showed up tonight. This is Mike Lofton. I live at five oh eight Polling House Road in Harwood, Maryland. And I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Board for Growth Action Network. GAN's a coalition of community and civic associations, environmental groups, green businesses, and individuals involved in advocacy and citizen education, with the goal of assuring that growth and development in Anorondle County is well-planned and sustainable, fiscally sound, and will not harm current neighborhoods or the environment, and will enhance the quality of life for current residents. GAN has about fifty-five individual members and thirty member organizations. Our member organizations have total membership exceeding twenty thousand residents of the county. We enthusiastically support Bill twelve twenty-one. I'm sorry that there aren't hours of affirmative testimony here. The location of renewable energy systems on otherwise unusable land is the very definition of win-win. We urge the council and administration to make this the model for future solar development projects in Anorondle County. And frankly, whether it's on public or private land, we need to have a set of policies that drive renewable energy onto these kinds of properties, and not the good farmland of South County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. The public hearing on Bill number twelve twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twelve twenty-one.
Bill number twelve twenty-one, an ordinance concerning approval of a ground lease between Anorondle County and Glenberney Landfill Solar LLC.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number twelve twenty-one.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Oops. I just probably shouldn't have done that. All caps, A-Y-E, exclamation point.
Thank you. That's seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number twelve twenty-one is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number thirteen twenty-one.
Bill number thirteen twenty-one, an emergency ordinance concerning rules of practice and procedure of the Board of Appeals amendments.
Okay, so this bill is a little bit strange. I'm the sponsor, but that is because someone needed to bring this bill on behalf of our hard-working Board of Appeals, and it wasn't going to be the administration. But Ms. Pickard is also co-sponsor, and I believe Mr. Pruski added himself. I don't have anything to say. I think we should have Mr. Lamartina, or I don't know if anybody else also from the Board of Appeals is joining us today to talk about the bill. Mr. Lamartina, you are muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the emergency ordinance and for all those who sponsored it. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for considering this in such a rushed manner. The bill before you, underneath of the bill, gives a great explanation of what the amended changes that we're asking for. So they're, they pretty much, that's all you really need to know about the bill. I do have with me here tonight, though, are, there are members of the Zoom hearing. I have Kathy Ward, our attorney, to the board, and I also have Deana Bussi, she's our executive secretary, and also the clerk to the board. So we're here to ask any questions. We would ask that you move this bill so that we can go about hearing cases. It will take, I'll give you a, right upfront, it will take us thirty days to advertise a case to be heard before the board because of our advertising requirements. So thirty days from the signature, and once this is approved, we can start advertising cases for that far out. So having said that, if there's any questions about the bill, anything that council needs to be, needs us to address, I'd be glad to do that. I also asked members of the board to make sure council, that their council members were aware of the fact that the legislation was pending, and I hope they gave you a copy of it and asked if you had any questions, you know, so you could be prepared to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Lamartina. I do believe all of my colleagues and I received copies, and I did want to confirm with you if it's, you need a thirty-day, or I should say, the board needs a thirty-day period to advertise. And the bill, the reason that I believe it is an emergency ordinance is so that it can become, take effect from the day it becomes law, which would be the date that the county executive signs a passed bill, correct? So we won't, you'll save forty-five days. That's the only reason we made it an emergency.
Thank you. That's what we were hoping for.
Good, okay. Other colleagues have questions? Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, it's great to see Ms. Ward and Ms. Bussi. I actually served on the Board of Appeals prior to my tenure on the council, so thank you. And Mr. Lamartina, I, I appreciate you coming because a lot of people don't realize there's people waiting for cases, and I'm sure you're getting a lot of calls and information, so the sooner we can get this done. And again, I appreciate the work that, that everybody does, you and your representatives. And so I fully support this, and if we can get it moving, let's do it. And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski.
Any other questions from the council at this time? Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, Pete Barron with the administration. The administration supports us, and I'll do everything in my power to expedite the bill signing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number thirteen twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions on Bill thirteen twenty-one.
Nor do we have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill number thirteen twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number thirteen twenty-one.
Bill number thirteen twenty-one, an emergency ordinance concerning rules of practice and procedure of the Board of Appeals amendments.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Pickard.
If I may, I just want to say thank you to everybody here from the Board of Appeals, and we are, I think, the council is ready to move this bill to get you guys back in business. So thank you again for being here, and good luck with all that advertising.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Thank you very much.
Looks like we're ready. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number thirteen twenty-one.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number thirteen twenty-one is passed.
Thank you very much, members of the council. We definitely appreciate it. We will have no problem getting rid of any perceived backlog that people think we have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lamartina. We look forward to hearing of the good work you all do. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number fourteen twenty-one.
Bill number fourteen twenty-one, an ordinance concerning zoning and construction code, setbacks and permits for certain accessory structures.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't wanna repeat the, um, questions we had during the work session. We do have an amendment to address one concern by the administration. I fully support that as a friendly amendment. Uh, but for the benefit of the public, this bill really, uh, puts into focus, uh, what, what's already happening in the county. Um, and I, I wanna reiterate, reiterate this, that if you were to go to Home Depot or Lowe's right now, um, it's very hard to find a seven by seven foot shed. They're eight by ten, you know, they're eleven by seven, uh, that's what's out there. And as far as the county right now, uh, you do need a permit for a seven by seven, and of course, we're changing that for a hundred fifty or less. And then as I discussed, the R five, um, there are a lot of irregular lots, if you look throughout Anorondal County, particularly in that zone. Um, they're usually seven thousand square foot lots. A lot of them are six thousand, six thousand one hundred, and they're unable to meet kind of that front setback, but the other ones, so that's why that's there. And certainly, this does match the, uh, international, uh, maintenance code as well, as we discussed at the work session. So again, I'll stop there, leave it at that, but, uh, hopefully we can, uh, move forward.
Mr. Baron.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Uh, just real quick, the, the team at the table with me, we have Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Miller, uh, Mr. Africa, Mr. Wasim, and Ms. Kenny. Um, as discussed at the work session, the administration supports this bill, appreciates the sponsor working with us and, and very much appreciates the forthcoming amendment being treated as friendly. Um, this bill just makes sense. With that, ask you to move the bill after the amendment.
Mr. Pruski.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I did wanna address one issue that a constituent, uh, did send. Again, Councilman Andrew Pruski, District Four. Um, if you have a homeowners association and they have additional restrictions, um, this does not apply, just like anything in our code, that if there are additional things that your HOA, as in, obviously, um, it, it wouldn't matter. County code really sets up for permits and what are the basic parameters. But if you have, again, a local HOA or homeowner association, or some type of deed restriction, whatever it might be, um, again, I just wanna make that absolutely clear, cause we did have a constituent email and asked, does this change if an HOA had different restrictions? And that answer is no. And again, the amendment will be coming here shortly. Thank you.
Are there any other, uh, questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on bill number fourteen twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Oh, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony on bill number fourteen twenty-one.
Nor do we have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill, so the public hearing on bill number fourteen twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number fourteen twenty-one.
Bill number fourteen twenty-one, an ordinance concerning zoning and construction code, setbacks and permits for certain accessory structures.
Let's get to the amendment, please. Amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment clarifies that the increased allowable size for the exemption from the permit requirements of the construction code is for accessory structure to a residential structure only.
Okay, and this is an administration amendment, which is, is friendly. Mr. Pruski has his flag, but Mr. Baron gets to go first. I don't know what to do. Mr. Baron, you go first.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Baron, uh, with the administration. Just, this was discussed at the work session. There was a concern, uh, that this could, could lead to, um, sort of creep, uh, mission creep of the bill, uh, and allow commercial, uh, areas to set up, uh, a, a shed that no longer really becomes a shed. You run electric or whatever, and it becomes a workshop, which is, which is something a little different. So, um, the, the, the problem in the code that we've really encountered has been in relation to residential structures. Or, and so this bill does not change the current rules around commercial just, uh, or industrial, just, uh, provides a little bit more room, um, for a shed in a residential, uh, zone. So with that, um, appreciate, uh, the sponsor of the bill working with the administration to address this concern.
Mr. Pruski.
Madam Chair, a motion to adopt. Amendment number one.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, I just wanna understand this. I, I get that the, the statement of, um, you know, a commercial entity could come in and put in something like this in a commercial district, and it would be bigger than maybe what the county, uh, would like. I'm not exactly sure why. I don't, I don't quite get the difference between residential and commercial here. But to be clear, whether it's residential or commercial, if you try to run electric out to a shed, uh, somebody at IMP can correct me, but I don't think it matters what size it is. You have to get an electrical permit. If you try to run water out there, same thing, you're gonna need a plumbing permit. Uh, so I, I guess what I'm not really clear on is, what's the distinction? Cause I don't know that you're actually stopping the thing that you wanna stop. So if, if you're worried somebody's gonna make this into a de facto workshop, you're gonna have a way to deal with that, whether you give an electrical permit or not. So, and you guys can tell me if I'm, I'm missing something, but I guess I'm not sure why we're limiting this entirely to residential. There's a lot more residential in the county, and if everybody in the county gets one of these sheds and puts it in, we're gonna have a lot more sheds than if we allow these in commercial districts.
Uh, Pete Baron with the administration. Uh, I'm gonna ask IMP, maybe Mr. Wasim, who, who really raised this issue, to go in a little more detail. I've probably butchered the, the rationale behind, uh, what we were trying to do here.
Uh, sure, this is, um, I'm gonna be with Wasim with IMP. Uh, the intent is when a permit is required, um, so for residential, a permit is required, uh, or the amendment is allowing for a permit not to be required, uh, for a hundred and fifty square feet. Um, if you're a commercial, a permit is required, and that is just based on what the international codes are, what the national codes are. So, um, that is the way we're approaching this.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey. Um, so Mr. Wasim, just to follow up on that then, I just wanna make sure I understand what the codes say. So you're telling me that the international code says that for residential, you can have up to a hundred and fifty square feet without a permit, but for commercial, the international code is saying that if you're in a commercial district, you can only have up to sixty-four square feet?
Yes, that is correct. And I'm not, I'm not sure we, we didn't have, we didn't have really time to miss it. We did rely on the national codes. We adopt the ICC International Building Code and the ICC International Residential Code. And both of them lay out exceptions to when a permit is required. And if you look at either one of them, they have different rules, and the possible reasons could be that a commercial could be, could transform into something more different, because, and you have different occupants going in. Uh, you have folks going in and out, whereas the residential, it is probably gonna be the homeowner. That's gonna be present likelihood that they're gonna be doing something, uh, weird as far as hard fuel loads. Uh, it's highly unlikely, when in a commercial, you could get exposed and open to anything.
Any further questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The amendment to fourteen twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill number fourteen twenty-one as amended will be heard on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Okay, thank you all. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number fifteen twenty-one.
Bill number fifteen twenty-one, an ordinance concerning licenses and registration, registration or renewal of short-term residential rentals fee.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Uh, so back in, I guess, right before COVID started, um, this council considered a short-term rental bill. It seems like a really long time ago at this point. Um, and one of the pieces of the bill was a, um, registration fee that I believe was set at four hundred dollars, and there was some discussion back at that point about why four hundred dollars and was that the appropriate fee? And, and there was some discussion about how that, that would be sort of tracked, and we would consider that, uh, moving forward. Um, fast forward to January of twenty twenty-one, and, uh, Councilwoman Radvian had a proposed bill into lower the fee temporarily to a hundred dollars, uh, based on, uh, COVID times and, and, and things like that. And there was a discussion at the council about, well, maybe a hundred dollars might be a more appropriate fee overall. Um, and we, we had some talk about what it's actually been costing the county so far. Um, the, the four hundred dollar number didn't really seem to have much, uh, actual support. Um, and, uh, there was some talk about how the city of Annapolis has a, a fee that's two hundred dollars, I believe, but it comes with an actual inspection of the property. Um, so in any event, I spoke with Councilwoman Radvian after, or during that meeting, and we had, we had gone back and forth about maybe we could just amend the bill that she had in January of twenty twenty-one to, um, be a hundred dollars on a permanent basis, as opposed to just temporary with COVID. And if you remember, there was a little bit of procedural discussion about whether we could amend that bill or do a standalone bill. Um, and I believe it was, um, our legislative council, Ms. Schewett, said that the proper way to do it was to come back with a new bill that would do just that. So that is what this bill does. It just extends that hundred dollar, it reduces that four hundred dollar fee to a hundred dollars, uh, moving forward, as opposed to, um, ending whenever the COVID, uh, state of emergency ends. So with that, I'm not sure if Councilwoman Radvian wants to add anything, but I would ask that you all move the bill.
Um, Mr. Baron, you can, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I really just wanted to add for clarification that the original four hundred was, uh, to cover a two-year period, and the one hundred dollar fee would cover a two-year period, but everything else, um, well, and I, I don't think you said anything to the contract, I just wanted to clarify. So, um, I think, uh, Councilwoman Hare, uh, gave a perfect summary, so thank you.
Mr. Baron, would the administration like to respond?
Sure, happy to. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. I have Mr. Africa from IMP with me, and I think we have, uh, Ms. Schumberg from, uh, Finance, but I don't think her camera's working, but she is here and, uh, can speak, uh, through the phone if needed. And Ms. Kenny from Law. Uh, yeah, I, I, I think, um, the sponsors covered this well. Uh, the discussion when we passed the bill was always that we thought we were setting it in, uh, in an appropriate way, but we had never done this before, and we would have to track and see. And then, um, literally on the, um, as the bill is finally becoming effective, uh, uh, that particular industry basically gets shut down by a global pandemic. So, uh, the administration is comfortable with, with this change, with the, the caveat that, um, continued monitoring of the appropriateness of any fees to continue moving forward. So with that, uh, administration has no objection, supports this bill.
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on bill number fifteen twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony on bill number fifteen twenty-one.
Nor do we have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. Therefore, the public hearing on bill number fifteen twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number fifteen twenty-one.
Bill number fifteen twenty-one, an ordinance concerning licenses and registration, registration or renewal of short-term residential rentals fee.
Last chance for discussion. It's a quiet bunch. Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number fifteen twenty-one.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number fifteen twenty-one is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? And specifically, Madam Secretary, is this the time that a council member should add their cosponsorship to any bills or resolutions that were introduced this evening?
Uh, if there's any additional ads that we wanna do, I did, I have made a note here. Mr. Pruski asked to be added to thirteen twenty-one, fifteen twenty-one, and twenty-five twenty-one. If you'd like to confirm that, I see a head nodding.
That's what I recall as well.
Okay, good.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District Six. I'd also like to be added as a co-sponsor to, uh, twenty-five twenty-one.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to bill twenty-three dash twenty-one. Thank you.
Okay, well, now we know how to do this properly for next time. Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I also be added as a co-sponsor to twenty-three twenty-one? It's in my district. I wanna support them.
Okay, all these additions have been noted. I think there is no other business. No one seems to be raising any, therefore, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard, D two.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until six PM on Monday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.